Land Systems Administrator here to provide a staff report regarding petition number twenty twenty dash zero one, a request from Warner Building LLC of Beale and Copper Properties LLP of Helena, Montana to close and vacate an alleyway in the Hobart and Morris Edition. Copper Properties LLP currently has in place an agreement to purchase the former Beale Orthopedics property located at two twenty-five South Clark Street. During the preparation of this agreement, it was noticed that alleyway was separating the two pieces of property they were going to purchase. At some point in the past, the platted but undeveloped alleyway in block four of the Hobart and Morris Edition was paved and incorporated into the parking lot of the former Beale Orthopedics. Warner Building LLC and Copper Properties LLP, majority property owners adjacent to this alleyway, request to close or vacate in order to formally incorporate this area into their existing parcels and eliminate the public alley from the middle of their business operation. Beale Silver Bow has received no opposition to this closure over the two week interdepartmental and outside agency petition with you comment period. I have submitted four PDFs that Jason was going to try to bring up so you could view, but I don't know if you're able to see those or not. Okay, here's the first one. The first PDF is basically a vicinity map showing property ownership and landmarks near the requested closure area, which is shown in an orange axed pattern. Jason, may I have the next slide, please? This is basically the same map with several of the features removed that gives you a good look at the platted alleyway which had been incorporated now into the former Beale Orthopedics parking lot. Next slide, please. One more head, it's a Google Earth view. This is a Google Earth screenshot of the area in question. This is looking north on South Clark Street. You can see a dedicated alley in block three of the Hobart Morris Edition coming in on the right side of the screen with the alley to be closed or vacated on the left side of the screen just beyond that red truck, which is now part of the parking lot. Maybe at the last slide, please, Jason. This is a shot, another Google Earth view looking west, basically down the alley that was paved and incorporated into the Beale Orthopedic parking lot with the dumpster sitting basically right in the middle of where this platted alley has existed previously. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Good job. Any questions for Mr. Reardon?
Mr. Chief Executive? Well, Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chief Executive, I don't have any questions for Mr. Reardon, but I do want to let the commission know that we are now streaming live and the public can hear us. And with this communication, you'll notice that there's a refer to the public works recommendation that should not have been there, so please strike that. But that's all I have to say. We do have a call, so.
So this time, we'll open the public hearing and call for proponents or any proponent.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'm going to go to the phone. I don't know if it's a proponent or who it is, but I'll go to that.
Okay.
Oh, they just, they just hung up, actually.
It's not have been a proponent.
So.
Okay, second call for proponents? Third and final call for proponents?
Is there anybody?
No, but it's going to be, uh, thirty to ninety-second delay depending on the stream.
No calls, Commissioner Morgan?
No calls at this time.
Okay, then we'll go to opponents. Are there any opponents? Second call for opponents? Third and final call for opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the consenting agenda section. The A committee reports one through four and B communications one through eleven. Are there any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I would like to segregate communication number five twenty twenty dash three five four and number eleven twenty twenty dash three sixty.
Number eleven, what was the first one, number three five four?
Number twenty twenty dash three five four.
Are there any other segregations? Commissioner Morgan?
Uh, hold on. Mr. Chief Executive, I'd like to segregate out of the committee of the whole report, number one nineteen dash five seven eight and number two twenty twenty dash zero four.
Number two out of the committee of the whole?
Yeah, number two out of the committee of the whole and number one.
Okay. So are there any other segregations or friendly amendments? Seeing none, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a motion that we approve section two, the consent agenda, A, the committee reports one through four with the exclusion of number one nineteen dash five seven eight and number two out of twenty twenty dash zero four out of the committee of the whole report. B, communications one through eleven with the exclusions of number five twenty twenty dash three five four and number eleven twenty twenty dash three six zero.
Second.
And we have a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, A, one through four exclusive of number one, section one and two, and committee of the whole report, and B, one through eleven exclusive of number five and number eleven. Is there anything on the question?
Mr. Chief Executive, after this vote, we do have a call, so.
Okay. Do you want to take the call prior to the vote or?
Take the vote and then we'll go.
Is the screen up, panel up for voting?
They're working on it. All right, Mr. Chief Executive, the ballot's there.
Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Looks like we have eleven yea and zero nay.
Okay, motion carries. First, we'll go to section A, the committee.
Let's go to the phone line, phone line.
Well, go to the phone line first and see who's there. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you for calling the Beale Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record along with the communication that you're talking about. Hello?
Yes, this is Michael Townsend.
Oh, hello, Mike. We haven't, we haven't got gotten to your communication yet, and so what my plan was was to call you when we do.
Absolutely, that'd be awesome. It just said that you were having technical difficulties on the, on the website, and I've been stuck in the mountains, so.
Sure.
I was making sure we didn't miss it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a call when we get to your communication, which Mr. Chief Executive could be right now, right? Being that he's on the phone line? Hold on, Mike. Mr. Chief Executive, it's Mr. Townsend in regards to one of the communications that I segregated, so if it'd be.
You want to go to that one first then, is he still on the line?
Sure, if that's okay with you.
Okay, that'd be number two of the committee of the whole report, communication number twenty twenty dash zero four. Michael Townsend, citizen requesting council commissioner to reconsider the repurchase of my home located at one oh five West Fourth Street. I will comply with all rules and regulations of the county enrichment program. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Um, oh, I just bumped my power. Mr. Chief Executive, are you there?
Well, we are.
We're having all kinds of fun today.
You weren't.
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, as I indicated last week, I did want to segregate these two communications out of the committee of the whole report.
They're very difficult to hear, John.
Mr. Chief Executive, as I indicated last week, I, I did want to segregate these two communications or this communication out of the committee of the whole so that we could have a discussion on it. Just so the whole, the commission knows, I did receive an email from Mr. Harper and County Attorney Joyce also received that as well, that he was unable to, to make it to tonight's meeting. He had some prior engagements. I did not respond to his email because I wanted to bring the council up to speed on, on what we were doing and let them make the decision. As every, or as the commissioners know, and Mr. Townsend is on the line, we did pass resolution, resolution, I believe it was twenty twenty dash fifteen, it was in regards to this communication last week. So at this point, the commission has to decide to approve Mr. Townsend's communication with the caveat that the, the resolution be followed or denial of it, or hold it in abeyance depending on what they, what they choose to do. So I really just want to open it up to the council, let them know of the communications that I've received from Mr. Harper and see how the commission wants to proceed with this communication. I don't know if Mr. Townsend has anything to, to comment on or if he just wants to wait for the, any questions from the commissioners, but. Mr. Townsend, do you have anything to, to comment or?
Uh, no, just, just the fact that we've been, we've been trying to comply with the Act and Inc. and all their, their rules and regulations. Uh, we've also, we've also done a little bit of renovation and we have plenty more to come.
We applied for the grant.
We, uh, uptown renewal grants, we were trying to get those also to upgrade.
CPR, right, the CPR?
The CPR.
Yeah, CPR.
Okay.
And, uh.
Which is students for preservation and revitalization, maybe? Yeah, we're, we're in the middle of a grant process with them.
Can you hear that?
Yeah, can you just indicate who that individual is, Mike?
Yeah, this is my assumed to be wife, Bridget Dahman.
Hello, Bridget.
Hi.
Okay, is there anything else?
Um.
You know, um, uh, not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Chief Executive, I'm sure the council has questions or whatever.
Are there any questions from the council? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, I was wondering, you know, it's been a while and I think we could all be re-edified and reeducated on how this all worked with the resolution. I was wondering if I just get Eileen to give us a thumbnail on what that resolution means now to us and what the next steps would be if we did concur with this and send it off to the, you know, probably to the Treasury Department. So I was going to ask Eileen, she might just give us a quick update on that. Thanks.
County Attorney Joyce?
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, uh, so what has occurred is that, you know, the council decided to pass the resolution indicating that they would have a process for people to follow in between a first and second tax sale. And so these requests are based on that procedure. And since each of these individuals have made a request to purchase their property after it was already offered once for tax sale, um, the next step is within fifteen days, they are supposed to pay the minimum bid price that was established at the first tax sale and any additional taxes that have accrued since that time, plus all penalties and interest that are due through the date of purchase, and administrative fee of one percent of the minimum bid price that was established at the first tax sale, um, and pay any outstanding liens against the real property and any utility costs against the property. I think the, in the future, these requests are to be made to the adminis, the land administrator, the Land Systems Administrator for Beale Silver Bow. These, of course, were, requests were made to the council because there wasn't a resolution process established yet, but, um, they've made their request, so now they would have, should the council concur, um, and allow them to repurchase their property, they would have to meet those requirements that I just read. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Commissioner Fisher and then O'Neill?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Uh, I don't know that we do, but do we have a total amount for each of these properties that these people have to come up with within fifteen days? Does Lori, uh, Treasurer Lori Patrick have a amount these people have to come up with so that we are confident that they are going to be able to come up with the cash to do what they need to do prior to our vote?
Do we know if we have that? County Attorney Joyce?
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, yes, she has prepared a spreadsheet of what those costs would be, and it would be up to these individuals to contact her, which they've been advised to do already, but they could find that amount up, the amounts from her and then would have the fifteen days to, um, make those payments.
Follow up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Uh, question for Mr. Townsend. Do you know the amount or are you capable of paying that amount?
I, at this time, I do not know the amount. Uh, she told me a couple of weeks ago, it would be around six thousand. Um, I'm not quite sure. I know that I, I do have a financial backer that I can get a loan from. His name is Michael Riley. Um, I would be able to come up with that.
And we also paid our utilities up to date. Uh, when I came in a couple of weeks ago thinking that you guys were voting on it.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. That, that was my questions as well. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and thank you, Mr. Townsend, for speaking with us. I believe the way Eileen has described it is pretty cut and dried, you know, at this time, we now have a process and we could follow, and as long as the people that are trying to redeem their properties are able to fulfill those obligations, we're really out of the picture. All we're asked to do, if you look at this communication, is that reconsider allowing him to repurchase his home. That's, that's basically what we're being asked to do. And so I think with that said, I would make a motion to concur with communication twenty twenty dash zero four on the condition that Mr. Townsend meets the requirements and set forth in this new resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen and place an appeal.
Second.
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 We have a motion made and seconded to concur in requesting communication twenty twenty dash zero four and allow him to purchase back the property as long as he follows the rules and regulations in the, uh, resolution. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Um, a county attorney question for her, I believe. If they do not come up with the money within the fifteen days, there's no extension period, there is no nothing in the resolution, the property goes back to the tax sale. Is that correct?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, yes, then the property would remain in Beale Silver Bow's name, um, and it would be offered a second time at the next tax sale.
Follow up, Commissioner Fisher?
And after the fifteen days, what would the eviction process be?
County Attorney Joyce?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, um, we'd have to discuss that. I think the next tax sale is scheduled for October, so it may be such that, um, the eviction process would take as much time as, you know, to, to have the, it's scheduled for a second tax sale, so we'd have to look at that, but I, I think that, um, the fact that you have to, uh, you know, notice up the second tax sale and give people notice, um, we may not accomplish an eviction prior to that second tax sale.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. County Attorney Joyce, can you just let me know when the fifteen day clock starts ticking?
It would start, excuse me, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shea, it would, um, start, um, as soon as the council approves the request, so tomorrow, I would, I mean, if the council were to, uh, vote on Commissioner Shaw's motion and the affirmative, if that passed, then the fifteen days would start, um, tomorrow.
Any further on the question? All those, or will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, we're just waiting for one more. If everybody could just make sure they submit it, if not, we can view them. I'll just view, looks like we need, who we got, Josh? Commissioner Soreich, we need a vote from you. Commissioner Soreich, you're on.
Uh, I vote yea. My screen has froze up on the polling, so I can give a thumbs up.
Okay, Mr. Chief Executive, that's eleven yea, zero nay.
Okay, motion carries.
So Mr. Townsend, you're still on the line?
Yes, sir.
So the commission voted to, um, affirm your communication based on the resolution of fif, or twenty twenty dash fifteen with the restrictions in that? So you have fifteen days, so my, uh, contact the treasurer and proceed with that.
Absolutely.
Okay?
I thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Mike.
And you guys have a good night.
You as well. Back to you, Mr. Chief Executive.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to take about a two minute break here. I'm getting a phone call from the press about not being able to hear what's going on, so I just want to give them one chance to try to figure this out. We have it on here. Commissioner Morgan, is there anyone on the phone right now?
Is there anybody on the phone?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chief Executive, you want me to go to the phone?
Yes, if you would.
Okay. Are we back in session, Mr. Chief Executive?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for calling the Beale Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yeah, this is Mike Smith with the Montana Standard.
Hello, Mike.
I've been up, I've been unable to get any audio or video, and I, and as we're supposed to do in these cases, I question the legality of the meeting. Even, even under COVID, you can't leave the public out. If there's, if there's a way to call in and phone in and just listen, it's not well publicized, I don't know what it is, I've talked to my editor, it, it, I don't think it meets the legality of the law or the spirit certainly of the law. I assume the meeting's already gone on and, and done, and, and this is the end?
Uh, we're still in the middle of the meeting, but, um, people have figured it out. We have had several calls throughout this process and, um, we just hung up from a phone call just a couple of minutes ago, so, um, how do you?
Well, I, I, I backed, I, I backed out of it and gone back into it. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, I've got a laptop, I've got a phone, I've been trying to do it both, I've never had problems. So something's not working right. Anyway, I just.
Attorney Joyce, would you like to comment, reply?
Mr. Chief Executive, the, the fact that the press is able to call in, um, shows that they're able to participate in the meeting. The law requires, you know, that the public be able to, um, participate. Um, there's no requirement that the meeting be streamed. You have to prepare an agenda, obviously, in minutes of the meeting and, and give them an opportunity to participate, but the phone line is working and, um, it is on the publicly posted agenda, the phone number to call in to participate in this meeting. So, um, the phone line has been working the entire meeting and the public has been able to participate through the phone.
I, I pulled in and was put on hold for the entire time until now.
We had another person on the phone, uh, Mr. Townsend was on there answering some questions, uh, you know, and the trouble that we were experiencing with the audiovisual and the streaming is not our equipment, it's the national, it's the other end of the equipment. It's a problem everywhere, I guess, but, um, I don't know, you know, but, uh, we have been getting calls, we've just hung up from Mr. Michael Townsend and, uh, well, it's my understanding, and I'm not going to get, it's my understand, I mean, this is the call, this is the phone line to call, I mean, this is the phone line to call in to comment, not to listen to the proceedings. I was immediately put on hold all this time. How was that participating in the meeting? How was that, how was that viewing or listening to a meeting? You know, when, when, when there was a power outage and that, and that messed up some feed for the, um, planning board not too long ago, they canceled the meeting. They rescheduled the meeting because the public couldn't participate. So, you know, is, is there a way I can at least listen to the rest of the meeting on this line or is this just a comment?
Mr., Mr. Smith, we, you wouldn't be able to remain on the line as we wouldn't be able to receive any other phone calls at that time. The courthouse, we do have seating available spread out within six feet.
Commissioner Morgan? I'm unable to hear. Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chief Executive, I don't know how you want to proceed.
Would it take a quick recess?
Let's take a fifteen minute recess and then we'll come up with an answer here.
Mike, did you hear that? We're going to take a recess.
Meeting will resume at nine thirty-three or eight thirty-three?
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know how, I mean, should I just stay on the line until that? I don't know what to do. I mean, I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time, I just don't, I just, I, I can't listen or, or nobody can listen or hear.
Mike, just remain on the line and then when we get back, we'll let you know what comes up.
Okay.
Is it muted? No. Now, if I hit make busy, does that put it back in queue?
Isn't that muted?
Yeah, it's muted, so, okay. I've also been here.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, and can we have a roll call once?
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have everybody back except Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, so it's the same attendance that we had prior to our recess. You know, back to the county attorney, and legally, we could probably continue with the meeting, but fairness to the general public out there that may want to listen in to some of the discussion, especially a couple of the communications that Commissioner Fisher segregated, I would like to continue this meeting until Tuesday. I wanted to do it tomorrow, but there's not great confidence that AV will be back up because they're having trouble all over the place with it, and technical support, which is hard to get a hold of right now, so, and then with the long holiday weekend, I would like to try to do it Tuesday afternoon, and probably at 5:00, just so everybody could log in and continue that meeting. Is that gonna work for everyone? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess my concern is what about the business that we've already attended to since the beginning of this meeting that no one has had a chance to hear? I mean, I'm just wondering if Eileen could address that, I'm a little nervous about it. Thanks.
You know, County Attorney Joyce, did you hear that question?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, yes, I did. I think that you probably on Tuesday want to reconfirm the action that was taken. The open meeting laws, you know, there was an agenda, it was posted, the remedy for somebody to challenge whether there was an open meeting violation, there's the 30-day statute of limitations on that, and if somebody did that, action could be voided, so you probably do want to, at the next meeting, reconfirm the action that was taken.
Follow-up? Follow-up, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Dave. So, Eileen, does that mean the motion would have to be made again, and, you know, and then the clock would start ticking, as Commissioner Fisher mentioned, on Mr. Townsend in particular, on that date? Is that correct? Would I, we just would revisit the motion?
County Attorney Joyce?
Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, I think that would be the safest way to go. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Mr. Chief Executive, just a point of order, I don't think we should continue the meeting with questions. If we're going to postpone this meeting, we should do it now.
Well, I think, I think the question is about whether we can get it formed next week, Tuesday, but... That is correct. My question, Mr. Chief Executive, is if we meet on Tuesday, is that a proper notice for anyone that, you know what I'm saying, I don't know, proof of public, you know, are we okay to meet on Tuesday without anybody saying that they didn't know we're gonna meet on Tuesday? If I can be an orderly.
We can put a, something on the news in the newspaper, and I'm sure it's gonna be reported on...
Sure. As long as you win.
As long as we win.
And Eileen having figured out, I'm comfortable. Thank you, a good day to finish, thank you.
And we have time to give 48 hours' notice of the next meeting, and it should be reposted on the website.
Okay, and that's what we will do, and we'll shoot for Tuesday, and at 5:00, that is people's time, you know, the ones that are working, it'll be, probably be a busy day after a long weekend, but hopefully everyone can make it, and we'll just ask for a motion to adjourn, or not adjourn, but to continue the meeting.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'll make a motion that we continue the meeting on Tuesday at 5:00.
Second.
There we have a motion made and seconded to continue this meeting until Tuesday afternoon at 5:00 p.m. On the question, Commissioner Olson, did you have a question?
My only question is that budget and finance also didn't appear to be recorded, does that would have to run again also? That's just a...
I believe it was probably recorded, but it wasn't streamed. Have they been streaming the meeting?
No.
The Economic Development Committee was streamed, and it is out on the website right now, AV captures website. Budget and finance is out there, but there's no, there is no video or audio of it, it looks like it hadn't even started, so that's just a thought.
And Commissioner Sorge? You're on mute, John.
Okay. I'm playing devil's advocate. Is there, there's not gonna be 48 hours between the agenda between Tuesday and Wednesday, because that could be closure? Because you're gonna, you need 48 hours on the, on the agenda, you know, so what was approved, so what's gonna be approved on Tuesday? Is there not gonna be 48 hours between the two days?
I'm not following. Wednesday's meeting will be a committee of the whole meeting, which really doesn't have...
Yeah, okay.
Anything pertaining to this meeting on...
And it'll also be posted on Monday.
Okay.
On Friday.
Okay.
Anything further on the question to continue the meeting? Okay, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Commissioner McDonough?
We don't have a screen... Do you not have a screen? Are we recording this or can we just do audio vote? We can do audio. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. See everyone Tuesday at five o'clock, hopefully.
Thanks.